Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Select, uh, Select Board meeting, excuse me, for Monday, January 23rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in which we are one nation, united in the great justice for all. Thank you. Before we do open forum, we have Fire Chief joining us tonight. He's got some appointments that he'd like to do. Come on up, Chief.
Thank you for having us all here. Just getting started myself, and as everybody knows, the Fire Service kind of rooted in tradition. So I wanted to start a tradition with the two newest members that we have for the department. So, starting now and hopefully moving forward, we'll have all our new members come here. Thankful to the Select Board to let us do this, to come here and be sworn in in front of their friends and family and also their coworkers.
Great.
It's a big opportunity and a big moment for them, so I'd like to share it with everybody. So, we're gonna start off. If Ryan Thompson wants to come up first? So just, if you wanna... So, I'm, Ryan is actually born and raised here in East Bridgewater, graduated from East Bridgewater High School. Can I say the year?
(laughing)
No, I'd rather have you not.
I know.
Let's put it this way, he's the youngest member of the East Bridgewater Fire Department. Ryan's going through medic school currently right now, hoping to finish up at the end of the year, and then after medic school, he'll move on to the Fire Academy. So...
Okay, so we're gonna do the swearing in. You're just gonna repeat after me. I'm gonna try to not mess it up for you. We'll see how it goes. Okay, so just use your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Ryan Thompson.
I, Ryan Thompson.
Solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform-
Solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform-
-all of the duties incumbent upon you-
All of the duties incumbent upon me-
...as a duly appointed firefighter-
As a duly appointed firefighter-
...in the town of East Bridgewater-
In the town of East Bridgewater.
...and in accordance with the rules and regulations-
In accordance with the rules and regula- regulations.
...of East Bridgewater Fire Department-
Of East Bridgewater Fire Department.
...the bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater-
Bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater.
...and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts-
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
...and the Constitution of the United States of America-
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Perfect. (applause) Either may I borrow your pen-
Absolutely.
And have you sign right there.
We're all gonna have, um, come in, pin his badge on.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So a little history. Me and Ryan know each other, right?
Yeah.
Little basketball.
A little basketball, right? I was his coach. Hell of a, play hell of a person, too. And I'm really happy to see it. Kinda get a little bit of the goosebumps here, seeing you stand up here. That's great, Ryan. Good job.
Thank you.
Your mom, eh, great family, obviously. I'm really, really proud of where you've come from when we first started. But, I'm a little upset because that means I'm getting real healed.
Yeah, you know what? They grow fast.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
It's your opportunity to inflict a little bit of-
Yeah, right.
(laughing) (applause)
You can leave that right there, Ryan.
Thank you.
And next up is Katie Maffey. So Katie is not from East Bridgewater. Originally from Pembroke, now currently lives in Halifax with her husband and three kids. Katie is also going through medic school right now, hoping to finish up, actually in just a month or so. Already got a date scheduled for the Fire Academy for October, so by the end of the year, Katie should be a fully trained paramedic firefighter for the East Bridgewater Fire Department.
Okay.
So, Katie, I solemnly swear that you or I will faithfully perform all the duties-
Solemnly swear that I will perform all the duties-
...incumbent upon me-
Incumbent upon me-
...as a duly appointed firefighter-
As a duly appointed firefighter-
...in and for the town of East Bridgewater-
In and for the town of East Bridgewater-
...and in accordance with the rules and regulations-
In accordance with the rules and regulations-
...of East Bridgewater Fire Department-
Of East Bridgewater Fire Department-
...the bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater-
The bylaws and the town, and the laws of East Bridgewater.
(laughing) And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts-
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts-
...and the Constitution of the United States of America-
And the Constitution of the United States of America-
So help you God.
So help me God.
Perfect.
(applause) Are you gonna have you sign your oath card? That is for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Katie's husband is on the Police Department in Duxbury.
That's right.
So it's good to see you, little team red.
Yeah, right.
She'll be inching, inching con-
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Thank you.
That's great.
(applause)
So that's it, but thank you so much. Hopefully we can continue to do this. And to the new recruits, train hard, never stop learning, right? And always carry yourself mentally, because congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
You're next, Katie. Do you need to swear in, assistant?
I must swear in. Do you want me to?
When do you normally?
I usually just do it in my office.
Oh, okay.
If you guys vote on it.
No, that's fine.
I don't know, I just have this on that.
(laughing)
Sorry.
No problem.
All right. That's great. It's a good little tradition. Let's start.
Yeah.
Open forum. Let's move on. Is anyone here for open forum? Come on up. Good evening. So, we, we know Olivia, obviously, but you guys would both just give your name for the record and-
Yep, my name is Brian Bosie. I work for the International Brotherhood of Teamsters. I'm the representative for the clerical workers in town, as well as the Department of Public Works, your DPW. As stated, my name is Brian Bosie, work for the International Brotherhood. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of your clerical and DPW workers. Myself and a number of fellow Teamsters are also here tonight to show solidarity in our fight to achieve a fair contact, a contract with the town and educate their residents on the current negotiations. To say negotiations are not going well would be an extreme understatement. We feel as if this town has not been bargaining in good faith. The union has made concession after concession with hopes to achieve a fair contract for all. At this point, the town has offered no coal raises to its employees, which with the rise of inflation and medical insurance going up 10%, this is a slap in the face to its employees, most of which are your constituents. This union will fight for its members, your employees, even if you won't. Just came here today to express my concern for how negotiations are going and to make sure that everybody is aware of what is going on. On short notice, only about 10 or 12 people are here, but obviously more would come if they had more notice and will be here in two weeks when you guys meet again.
Yeah, so, we appreciate you coming in, you know, voicing your concern. We ask that quite a bit as a board to make sure we understand. You know, Charlie's got a big responsibility as well, as well as Rebecca to, to work with those unions. They obviously have communication with the board and discuss as the contract negotiations go on. Again, I will say, you know, for my tenure, about five and a half years, you take very seriously the positions of our employees. Say all the time that, you know, there's a reason that we, we continue to look for the type of employees that we have here in order to run the type of business that we want to have. You know, it's a $63 million business, the way I look at it, and we need to continue to have the, the support of those people working in the trenches, so to speak, right? Not just department heads, but also the employees. So, you know, we'll continue to hopefully work towards a, a common goal, which would be something that would work for you as well as for, for the, the town. You know, I wish the financial situation in East Bridgewater was, was, was in a better light right now, but that being said, you know, there's a reason they call it negotiations. We need to go back and forth. And again, like I said, I appreciate you coming in and bringing it to light what the, what the situation is from your, from your standpoint.
Yep.
Catherine?
Yeah. No, um, my grandfather was a union worker in the post. He was a mailman for 33 years, so I appreciate you guys coming forward and airing your grievances. It's important. Um, I haven't had the privilege to meet either of you yet in person, but my name is Catherine and it's great to meet both of you and have you in front of us tonight. So I appreciate you guys bringing this forward to us, so thank you.
Obviously, you know, in the negotiations, you know, we do most of the discussions and executive session, things of that nature with, directly with Charlie, you know, talking about what's, what's transpired in those talks. So, you know, we'll kind of continue that way, but we certainly take into consideration both of you coming in today and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Open forum. Seeing none, I'll close open forum at 6:05. So a little bit late, but we have a public hearing. Catherine, I'll ask you just to read the public hearing notice so we can open up the hearing.
Yeah, a public hearing will be held at Town Hall, First Road Conference Room, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, on Monday, June 23rd, 2025 at 6:05. And we have one appointment at 6:10. And then we have, uh, choo, 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 seventeen action items.
Do we have anyone here representing, uh, it's now RDLR Holdings? Come on up. If you need an extra chair, just grab one in front and swing it on up. And then you can just give us your, your name and your position or-
Yeah.
Hey!
How's it going?
How's it going, all right? How's it going for you?
Can't complain.
Okay.
Uh, I'm Luke Palmerlo, uh, one of the owners of RDLR.
Uh, I'm Raymond Palmerlo, another older owner of RDLR.
Okay.
And I'm Jackie Palmerlo.
Oh, the whole family's here.
Yeah, yeah. So they're husband and wife and co-owners. Jackie's gonna be the boots on the ground general manager, just to explain the situation.
Great, great, okay.
And, uh, we're taking over East Bridgewater Cinemas for Brett and Michelle, who have become close with over the last month or so. And not much to say, except we're excited to be part of the community.
And you guys have other, obviously other cinemas in the area, or is this the first time out, or?
First time for a cinema.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. Yep. I've grown a successful engineering firm, so we've got business experience. We've got marketing experience on our team, too. Brian, who couldn't be here today.
Okay.
Um, but aside from that, no, no cinema experience, no.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Uh, so you're just gonna read the, the notice of, of the hearing?
Yep.
Which is stated, yeah, right up here.
Okay, perfect. Um, 6:05 notices hereby given to the pursuant of the requirements of MGL Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held to consider the, the proposed transfer of a general on-premises wine and malt beverage alcoholic license as follows, from South Shore Cinemas LLC, DBA, East Bridgewater Cinemas, Zach Jones, and to the RDLR Holdings LLC, DBA, East Bridgewater Cinemas, Jackie, um, Palmer, Palmerlo? Palmerlo.
Wow, good job.
Sounds good.
Manager, um, premises 225 Bedford Street.
Right. All right, uh, public meeting's open. Catherine, you have any, any questions or?
No, I think congratulations. If this is the first endeavor in, in the cinema world, I think that's awesome. I have the privilege to go to this. I was born and raised here, been able to go to that cinema for my whole life, so it's been awesome to have people that are, you know, first time go at it. It's really kind of cool, so congratulations.
Same here, my wife and I went on several dates to that cinema.
Right?
We were 15, 18 years old.
I love it. That's awesome.
We've gone there a long time.
I will say, I, I had a lot of dealings in the past with, with Brett and Michelle, um, you know, great people. Actually, I texted him today when I, you know, read the agenda on Friday. I sent him a text, just, you know, wishing him well. And first I said, "What's going on here? You really leaving?" And he's like, "Yeah, you know, it comes time." And I understood his circumstances. So Brett and Michelle have been years, but, you know, they, they want to spend a little bit more time. He's got a regular job outside of this, so he's looking to spend a little bit more time with the family and, you know, life is too short.
You can tell he really cares about the cinema.
Oh, he does.
He feels guilty that he has to-
He's not gonna leave you guys. I tell you right now. You're gonna see him down there telling you.
And we'll, we'll take, we'll take all the help we can get from him and Michelle. They've, they've already said they're gonna stay on for a little while and kind of help the transition, so.
You guys have some good neighbors, too. So my aunt actually lives right behind the cinemas, the Chartiers. They live right behind you guys on the Abbey Lane. And so, he, they've had a great relationship with, um, the previous owners, so I'm, I'm sure that they're, they're fun neighbors.
They don't complain a lot, I promise.
Hopefully we won't give them anything.
That would help. Charlie, is anything from your end? Any, any questions or?
Oh, good. I mean, I was there almost, no, 29 years ago to see Independence Day when it came out.
Okay.
Wow.
You need to get back. It's a little bit long.
Full house. I remember. One of the last seats there.
That was before Brett's time, even.
Could've been. I don't even know if they had a theater then. You might've just saw something.
(laughing)
I don't know what's going on. That's great. So we'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. You second the motion?
Second.
All right, I'm a favor. Aye. And then we can move. I think that was, um, action item one, if I'm not concerned. Am I not wrong?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll just read action item one and then we'll vote on that.
Well, it's, yeah.
One in?
Yes.
Oh, just one, yeah.
Just one. Um, to approve the transfer of the general on-premise wine and malt beverage alcoholic license, common vehicle license, automatic amusement device license, and entertainment license at 225 North Bedford Street and RDLR-
It should be just Bedford Street, not, not North Bedford Street.
Okay, Bedford Street. Um, Holdings LLC, DBA, East Bridgewater Cinemas, Jackie Paler- um, Hermelo, sorry, manager.
All right, motion's been made. I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Any questions for Charlie, our town administrator, or? Got a couple other town officials in here. Good to go?
I think we're good.
Well, again, any questions or any concerns, you come up. You see, see Lee, or, or you can see Charlie, and Rebecca's not here as well, but any one of them, they'll certainly guide you in the direction you need to go.
Everything else but the ABCC, we can issue fairly quickly. The ABCC, we have to send all the paperwork up and get it back from them before doing the actual transfer.
Okay, so our start date is July 1st. It's gonna be the first day under our control, so.
Okay.
If we can't have it by then, that'd be, that'd be great. If we have to go a few days without it, then that's okay, too.
All right, sounds good. All right, motion's been second. All in favor? Aye. You good to go?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, we're moving on to an appointment we have with the Board of Health. Is this a joint meeting?
Um, no. It's, they're a meeting with you-
Okay.
In a sense of, they, they have a quorum they need to post, but it's not a joint decision type of meeting.
Perfect. Sounds good. All right. See, they're all here. I want you guys to come on, come on up and take a seat, whoever wants to. You need a seat, grab it from the front and move it up. Do we need to open a meeting?
Uh, that was gonna be my first question. Do we need to open-
Do we need to open a meeting?
You, you might as well, you can go ahead if you want.
Just, uh, too pretty for prison. Yeah.
All right, I will make a motion to open a meeting of the East Bridgewater Board of Health.
I'll sign it up.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, gentlemen, how we doing? Everybody's good?
Excellent.
We've got a Board of Health agent.
Yes.
Yes, I guess so.
Well, we hope so, anyway. So we've got, we've got somebody we, we'd like to extend an offer to. Um, he's got some good experience, some relevant experience, and we think it'd be a great fit. Um, we had a, a few questions on basically what we can offer in terms of compensation. Um, I, I know Charlie said that he believed that the way we wanted to structure his compensation, which would include, uh, basically some salary bumps based on his obtaining a soil evaluator and an RS, would potentially have to go through you guys. Um, I'm not sure legally if I agree with that, but I haven't had, had a chance to speak with town council or anyone else about it, but I wanted to come here and just kind of broach the subject and start the discussion.
Yep. All right, Charlie, why don't you-
And I did review it with town council, who said that yes, because the personnel bylaw and the personnel policies fall within the board, the Select Board, and it covers all non-elected officials, including the Board of Health Agent. I know there's a separate, as you pointed out, there's a separate section in the general laws that seems to indicate that the Board of Health may determine salaries and compensation for its employees. But under, what town council had said was that the other, under Chapter 41, that overrules that. But I am, you know, what they're asking for remains in their budget. There was any $8,000 line. I'm the Board of Health Agent for fiscal '26. What they would like to propose is a base pay of $83,000, then $1,500, I think it is, for the soil evaluator-
Soil evaluator.
...and then $2,500 for the registered sanitarian. And they even, those, and it's gonna take a little time to-
Yeah, buy those.
...the candidate to go through that process and get the certifications. Even with those two, it would come up only at $87, so they're staying within budget. But, um, the Board of Health, usually every spring, sets up the wage and salary schedule for the non-union employees for the coming year. Um, and I wanted to make sure that the board voted these amounts if they wanted to approve these, is basically amending that salary schedule.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, yeah, so I saw Tom this weekend, so I was a little, I was, I, how do I put this? I mean, I, I was, didn't know that. I thought it was a salary bump, but I think that's what me and you talked about. You know, I thought it was just that. Again, you know, speaking for myself, um, when there's an educational benefit going forward, um, I think that's, you know, that's, that's great. I mean, we guess, gotta give some initiatives to, to our employees, for sure. And, uh, you know, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, even on top of that, being inside the budget, as you, you had stated to me, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't see an issue with it going forward from, from my end. And if nothing else, I think it's a, it's a good initiative that the board came up with in order to negotiate with, with the gentleman that's coming in. What is his name? Do we have a name for this?
Chris Schultz.
Okay.
He's from Abington. Um, I've known him outside of-
Oh, good.
...the health, uh, public health environment.
Okay.
But I think, I think we've made a really good choice and he'll be a great addition to the town.
Okay. And when do you hope our start date to be, Ruth?
Well, once we, once we give him an offer, an official offer, and he accepts it. Yeah, he said two weeks, so.
Okay, oh, yeah, so he's coming from another town. He's gonna give you a couple of weeks. Are there any questions?
I've had the privilege to work with Chris now for three years. Uh, I have seen the work that he's done with Lindsay in Abington, and he's done a phenomenal job, especially with our senior community there. Um, he's not only a great advocate for, you know, health in the town, but he also brings, uh, the Boy Scout mentality. You'll get to know that about him. Um, he's-
That's how I knew him, outside of-
Yeah, he's, he is honestly an extremely dedicated public servant. I'm excited to see the work that he'll do here in East Bridgewater. Um, I think if you're, you know, staying in the budget of your, what allocated is $88,000, correct? And you're paying him $83?
It would be $83 at the straight salary, then for the two certifications, one would be for $1,500 and another for $2,500, which if he obtained both of those, it would bring it to $87 and still within budget.
Okay, yeah. I think as long as you're staying in budget, that's great. And he, Chris is a great addition. So be kind to him, because he is really genuinely the most amazing human being.
I'm glad-
Very lucky to have.
I've, I've gotten two resounding endorsements after we signed and made the decision already, so it's good. Good, uh, it's better than the other alternative, right?
Oh, yeah. Find out, too, the other real quick if that was the case, yeah.
He is genuinely a really, not only a great public servant, but a great person. So you guys are lucky.
Great. Perfect. Anything else you guys want to add, or?
I mean, just that we, I know this is kind of unconventional, but we just felt it was, you know, fair to both parties, both of the town, not shelling out full boat right up front-
Yep.
...and then giving him some incentive to get the certifications that he'll need that will benefit us as well. Now, Peter, he also has, um, some sewer experience as well. Abington is more sewer than, than, uh, Title V, so we're septic.
That's good.
So he's gonna be a great addition to this building.
Perfect. All right, good. Well, I'm glad you were able to find that. And I'm sure Sandra back there is, is beaming a little bit with the opportunity to have somebody else come in. Um, so yeah, so you need, what do you need, Charlie? You need that in a-
We need the board to approve the amounts that the Board of Health's proposed for the salary and for the two certifications.
All right. Catherine, you want to just make a easy motion that we, to approve the, and Charlie, you might-
Maybe the language, approve the language in the offer letter.
Okay. Um, I approve the language for Chris Schultz to be paid or the offer to be made for, paid at a rate of $83,000. Um, do you want me to read the highlighted words there, too?
Yes, please.
In addition, receiving $1,500 of additional compensation per year for passing and completing in the first year your soil evaluator credential and license, and as well as a $2,500 stipend per year with the completion of your registered sanitarian RS credential and license, and completed within your first three years of employment.
All right, thank you. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Think we're good?
Just, I'm sorry, Peter, just, I, I cannot thank, and the entire board cannot thank Sandy enough for her patience and, and more importantly, the work that she's done-
Yep.
...and her partnership with HPHGG that have kept this whole thing afloat while we were going through this process. You know, it's never on a turn of a dime, but Sandy's done a fantastic job of keeping everything in line and, uh, keeping us in order and-
Keeping the lights on and whatnot.
Yeah.
Paying the bills.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job. Thank you. I appreciate it as well. Uh, okay, so motion's been made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys good? You're just gonna close your meeting, I guess, and you'll be all set.
Now, the Board just had one other question.
Sure.
And Charlie, you tell us if this should be offline or we need, need to do it here. So we had gotten, uh, we had received some funds allocated for, um, paying a temporary health agent or under a contract basis. We have a surplus of funds. Um, we're requesting that we retain a portion of it just to continue paying our outside help, if you will, until Chris gets on board.
Yes, I think that was the intent.
I don't think we can carry it, though. We have to close it out.
So we'll have to do a reserve fund transfer, okay.
Yeah. I know, we've got a few things already lined up that HPHGG will be covering.
Okay.
And then after that, I don't, hopefully we don't have too, too long to get him up on board.
Yeah. So if we can figure out, um, you know, offline, how much more money you'll need, basically, for the, for, until Chris comes in, how much more money between July 1st and Chris's arrival, you'll need on top of Melanie and the Finance Committee to do another reserve fund transfer.
Okay, Sandy's done all that calculation.
Okay, swell.
Got that extended out for that length of time. I think we've got every dollar accounted for.
All right, sounds good. All right.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, guys.
Oh, yes, let's, uh-
Oh, we gotta close.
I'll make a motion to close the East Bridgewater Board of Health meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Andy, how you doing?
Best day of my life.
All right, moving on. Uh, we'll go to our action items. We already got one nailed down. Let's go to, uh, discussion.
Yep, um, discussion and vote on 20 mile per hour for Flint Circle.
Okay.
So this came up because the Board previously approved the 20 mile per hour speed limit for Summit. Um, Flint is a three, as far as I can see on the map, a three-house subdivision that is an offshoot from Summit. You can't get to Flint without going through Summit, which has a 20 mile per hour speed limit. Technically, right now, the speed limit for Flint is 30, because we did not do a town-wide 25, typically settled. It doesn't make any sense for the speed limit in Flint to be 30, where it's 20 in Summit. So we're recommending to the Board that the Board establish a 20 mile per hour speed limit for Flint.
And I feel to ask, is there anyone here from Flint Circle? The four people that live down there, they're not here? No? Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, it only makes sense.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I think we really need to focus on what the processes is in order to make these changes in town. I understand that this is off of Summit Drive, but, um, we really need to sit down with the Traffic Advisory Committee and come up with a set and come up with a set of processes that are put in place just because I don't want to set a precedent where we're having somebody come forward and request a change and they can get it, you know, with no questions asked. I think we, I know that they have to go to the TAC right now, but I think that there does need to be a set of processes put in place in order to make these speed changes. And we need to really have that sit down. I, I kinda think we should maybe look forward to a discussion with the TAC about what these processes look like, whether that be a bylaw change or a TAC change, whatever it may be. Just 'cause I know that this is kind of a change that needs to happen because it's right off of Summit, but going forward.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will say, I was at the meeting they had this month. They have one scheduled for, I wanna say the fourteenth, Charlie, or something like that, yeah.
I think your first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I can probably give you that information too, because I know the chief will, you don't need to come up and talk. I'll take it here, but, you know, was, was one of the advocates on that group that discussed exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, which I think where, you know, I don't think it's, I don't wanna, I also don't want to say it's, you know, one person's responsibility, whether that be the chief or the DPW director, whoever else is on the committee. I, I think we all need to sit down and put our brains together and how we can set up these processes in a smarter, better way for the town.
Again, we're in our infancy stages, but that's, we definitely, that's great meetings, that's all coming together.
Yep.
Particularly issues.
Perfect.
And I like to thank you for your quick response too for Summit, getting down there and handling that for us. That was.
We saw it before, now they're not.
For now, for now. It's not jinx ourselves. Okay, thanks. We'll make a motion, motion's made, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Kruger family, sitting down front row, come on up. Just for the record, we obviously know who you guys are and what you do, but give us the names and the business.
Absolutely. Megan Kruger, Mistletoe Events and Mistletoe Creek Street Farm.
Matt Kruger.
Thanks, Matt. What's going on? What do we got, what do we got? I see we got a couple of, well, why don't you, why don't you read that in there, what they're looking for.
Um, so vote to approve the event application and waive the insurance requirements from Megan Kruger of Mistletoe Events LLC for the dark market event on October fourth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven to six P.M., rain date October fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Before we make the motion, I want you to give us a little idea of what, what we got.
Sure, absolutely. We held this market last year and it was a fall market for local business vendors, so small businesses in this town and surrounding towns that come and set up tables and then sell products, fall and Halloween-themed products to, you know, anyone who wants to come by. We're looking to initiate some changes this year, so we've been in talks with Mr. Coffey of Cadence Academy and he said we could use his parking lot as overflow parking because we had more guests than we expected last year, which was great. And then also, we've been in contact with Mr. Shea at the high school, who said that we were able to use the middle school parking lot as well. That's available that day. So we know that there are some insurance requirements he emailed us recently that we have to get in place. So we'll make sure we have all of those too. And then we'll probably chat with Lucini to see if they have a bus available so we can transport people back and forth. So we'll also take care of whatever insurance requirements are required for that too. But yeah, it's, it's fun, it's a huge market. We have, you know, a couple of food trucks that come by and I love Halloween, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And the waiving of the insurance requirements is for the individual vendors.
Yes.
Because many of them don't have normal general liability policies.
Yeah.
Obviously, you all will have one, but not the individual vendors.
Yeah, we run the same thing with the commercial, when they do events, there's certain vendors down there that just, you know, nonprofits, things of that nature that just don't have that kind of.
Exactly.
I understand that. Matt, you got anything?
I don't know, I think she did a good.
All right, just checking, just checking. Charlie, you have any questions?
I'll do number three and we'll go to four, which is somewhat related, same location, everything.
All right. So why don't you just make a motion for that, number three, and then we'll.
Yeah. Motion to vote, number three or number four?
Number three, then we'll jump into.
Motion to vote to approve the event application and waive the insurance requirements from Megan Kruger of Mistletoe Events LLC for the dark market event on October fourth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven to six P.M., rain date October fifth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, motion made, second. Any other discussion, any questions for Charlie or anyone else here? No?
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good. All right, so four, same, same idea, Charlie?
Same idea. So you are, as raised, you know, obviously, all businesses are looking to do more business, especially when you've got a seasonal business, some, like Mistletoe, they have various events and such. What they've done is bring in more concerts, I think it was a combined music and dance, was it a country dance?
Yes.
Yeah. Generally, what we would do with any venue like that would be to have them issued a year-long annual entertainment license, like we did with the commercial club as an example. They had an entertained one, there'd been no problems or anything. I just want them to make, have it on the record that they've got that license from you all.
Okay.
For it to have these type of events there.
All right, just make that a motion.
Motion to approve entertainment license for Mistletoe, Mistletoe Events LLC, two fifty-four Whitman Street, Megan Kruger, manager.
All right, I'll second that. Discussion, any events coming up you wanna bring up, or is a lot of people listening?
Yeah. We have actually a teacher that I worked with at the high school. She's a seventh grade teacher, is in a band called Wailing Wall, and it's an eighties-themed band. They do a lot of eighties covers. So she's going to be coming on the eighteenth, I think it is, of July. So, yeah, this should be really fun. You know, we really only hold these types of events when the musician reaches out and we're really in the business of trying to support local businesses because everyone's been so supportive of us as well. So, you know, if they approach us and ask and we happen to have availability, then we'll say yes, but.
Just kinda filling in the spot.
Yeah, where there's not a wedding or a shower or something along those lines. So, yeah, this should be pretty fun.
Yeah, great. Well, we, you know, obviously, continued success to you guys, done a hell of a job down there.
Thank you.
I've talked to Matt a couple of times and just seen the work that goes on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Spagon, we appreciate that.
And I don't think I've had the privilege to meet either of you before, but my name's Catherine. It's so nice to meet both of you. I've heard great things. My cousin Connor Leroux goes out and helps you guys.
Oh, Connor.
And he cannot say enough good things about you guys. And I've also been able to attend the events there and you guys do a great job. So I'm excited to kinda work with you guys going forward.
Thank you.
This also, I'm such a fall person as well, so this is very exciting, so congratulations.
Thank you so much. I had Connor as a student.
Yes, that's what he said. Yeah, it's so funny. I never, I never had you as a student. I think you came in after I graduated, but you're, it's so funny to see, you know, you guys' names over town. It makes me laugh. I'm like, I love it. So it's, it's nice to hear you guys give back to the community, so thank you.
Thank you so much, nice to meet you.
Yes, nice to meet you officially.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you all. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rob. All right, moving on, let me just go right down the list, I guess, of action items.
You do not have to read the whole list. As printed.
Approve the following Board Committee member appointments as printed with the exception of Elliot B. Jacobs.
Okay, yep. All right, motion made, I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
To accept the resignation of the following Board Committee reappointments as printed below.
All right, motion made, I'll second that. Discussion, I would like to thank each one of these, one, two, three, four, five, town members for their involvement in these different committees. Hate to see you go, but down to go, I guess, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The appointment of Kevin Boyle as the Plumbing and Gas Inspector effective July eighth, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Motion made, I'll second it. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Point Dylan Clark as Plumbing and Gas Inspector, alternate, alternate effective July eighth, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
All right, motion made, seconded, discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the request from the Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to WB Mason for office supplies for a two-year period commencing on July first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion made, I will second that. Any discussion? Charlie, any discussion on this?
This is, you know, these are normal from contracts from Southeastern.
Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the request from the Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to Spruce Home of Parkland, Washington for paper items for a one-year period commencing on July first, twenty twenty-five.
All right, motion made, I will second it. All in favor, oh, discussion, same thing, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the request from Southeastern Regional Service Group to award contracts to the visitor listed under the SER SG DPW Supply IFV for the one-year period commencing July first, twenty twenty-five.
All right, motion made, I will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to discuss and vote to increase the passport photo cost from ten dollars to fifteen dollars.
All right, motion made, I will second it. Discussion, I mean, five bucks?
Chris is here.
Oh, there he is, okay. Just a quick.
Yeah.
Thirty seconds on this.
Time, take it.
Everybody else, whether it's CVS here in town or anybody outside of town that provides photos, is seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, ninety-nine.
Okay.
This would definitely, you know, within reason. And like I said, that would bring in an additional one to two thousand dollars. We do roughly between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred photos a year. So, you know, with everything going on, everywhere costs and everything going up, this would be a good, you know, good time to jump on this. If this were to go into effect, Charlie, when would we, when would we start it?
Well, you know, July first, August first.
July first. Do you, do you guys need anything else from my office?
No.
Okay, all right.
We'll, we'll get a letter sent to confirm what we're doing.
Sounds good. And then we'll, we'll update, we'll update the website, update everything and go from there.
Great. And while we're on the discussion of passports, you guys, last you came in, you were pre-booked. Has it started over, taking reservations or whatever you do?
It started, started to thin out. We're booked up through the seventh of next month.
Okay.
And we are finally the real ID push that came before Memorial Day is kind of leveled out. We're back to, you know, people just booking appointments because they're traveling in the next year or so. So we are, we kinda hit a summer lull until school. And then once school starts back up, it, it gets, gets crazy again.
Sounds good. All right. Catherine, anything else, or? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, guys, have a good day.
Thank you. Pursuant to MGL Chapter forty, Section thirteen E, vote to transfer, transfer two-hundred-and-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and nineteen cents from account two-two-three-three-zero-six-zero-two-five-nine-seven, five-nine-six-one, Special Education Reserve Fund to one-three-zero-zero-six-six-five, sped tuition's, private programs for FY twenty twenty-five.
All right, motion made, I will second it. Discussion, Charlie?
Yes, so I'm gonna read from John Shea's email, just to put it on the record. I had budgeted, this is John Shea, the business manager over at East Bridgewater School System. I budgeted six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-three in FY twenty-five revenues for extraordinary relief circuit breaker funding. My estimate was based on upon receiving seventy-five percent of eligible expenses. Due to the statewide increase of sped tuition expenses and requests for extraordinary relief circuit breaker funding, the reimbursement rate was reduced to just under forty percent. This is resulting in a shortfall of about three-hundred-thousand dollars in order to meet the budget. In twenty-five, I'm requesting two-hundred-and-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and nineteen cents from the Special Education Reserve Fund. And this is a set aside, separate account that the town had already approved, so the money's there, just like we have a reserve fund, you know, for our normal expenses.
Yep.
They have a reserve fund for special ed and money had been put in there previously to be transferred to the school to account for this shortfall. Although, although the two-hundred-and-six-thousand does not account for all of the three-hundred-and-two-thousand shortfall, it should still be enough for me to come in at budget for fiscal twenty-five. In order for this to occur, a majority vote of both the school committee and the select board is needed. I'm currently having the school committee vote on this on June eighteenth, which they did. And they, John had asked whether this could be added to the Board's meeting tonight.
Yep.
So the only downside with all this is it's sort of a one-trick pony type of situation. There's no money going back in there.
Right.
If a similar occurrence occurs next June or next year, fiscal twenty-six, we'll have to find another source to balance. But because this money's available, this is gonna help alleviate the situation. I'm certainly recommending it for this year.
Yep. Okay, yeah, I spoke to John this afternoon. This was also needed to be voted on, which I think they did for the school.
Right, on June eighteenth.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, yeah, I mean, you know, you need it, you need it, right?
Oh, and it's there in case you needed it and you did. This is the rainy day fund, it rained.
It's raining, all right, though. All right. Catherine, any questions?
Um, I think my questions would be for Mr. Shea and I don't see him, so I don't have any right now. I don't, I would, maybe next time if he could come to ask some questions, that would be nice, but.
School committee meeting too, he's at those as well. You can certainly attend that.
Yeah, so I definitely, I think planning in the, it's going to be raining, I think, for some time, we've come to realize. So planning for this in the future is.
Well, the challenge is going to be that if, if you don't have money to stock away.
Right.
Then you, it's, that's been the challenge. He was able to stock away this money for the rainy day, it occurred. Problem is finding money to put aside for the next rainy day, which may be next year. And there isn't money available to do that.
Right.
Right. I mean, there's no, I mean, this is, this is the.
Necessary.
Yes, I mean, this is something that states, you know, you're mandated, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
And the situation was that the money normally would be there, but everybody else in essence was, everybody's umbrella burst because the state did not supply the money that it normally would have.
Correct.
At the seventy-five percent reimbursement rate. So I suspect that many school systems are in exactly the same situation in East Bridgewater's and how they're managing the situation may differ from community to community.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Motion for line item municipal relief transfers for FY twenty twenty-five on all departments.
All right, motion made, I will second it. Charlie, discussion?
Melanie.
Melanie?
These we do every year. By law, we're allowed to do them in the month of June and then up to July fifteenth. So what it allows us to do is any appropriated line, we can move money to another line appropriation through a vote by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Finance Committee met at six o'clock to approve them. So it's basically, if something happened during the year and someone's line item went over or, and then also if someone's line item went under, we can take the line item that went under and move it to other line items. So the first one, if they're in the same order, is kind of just like a hodgepodge of all the different departments that had some, like some that might not even realize that they overspent by like four-hundred dollars and so we're gonna move five-hundred in. Legal continues to be an issue for us, that we're above budget, over budget on that. There's things like the financial audit. We had two major programs this year, which we, our original contract was for one major program, so we needed some money there. So we take it from the above lines where there's extra money. So it could be that if there was an open position in a department, they might have money left that we can use to fill some of these holes. The DPW gave us basically one for each of their departments. So there's one for fleet. They had a really tough year with the fleet maintenance, with the cost of everything going up, all the parts. And they've been doing, every year, I think they take on more of the repairs for the town vehicles than they have in the past. So they had a big hole there, where they, they were able to fill with snow and ice since Hookon Wood. This year was calm enough, we did not go over in our snow and ice budget. The next DPW is, is DPW two, is the stipends for employees that they had. I think there had been a mistake in the original budget and the stipends had been left off, so they moved, they're taking money from snow and ice for that. Sewer, there were unanticipated sewer repairs for the Central Sewer District, so they're taking money from a salary line that wasn't spent. And the last DPW one is water. It's just within the water department salary, between salary and expenses. And then finally, the library, they were without a department head and without an admin assistant for quite some time this year, so they had a bit extra in their salary. So they're using it to get ahead a bit on some of the purchases that, because they know that their budget went down a little for next year and that we don't anticipate good budget, budget situations coming forward. So they're able to get a few things off their list.
Thank you. All right, so what we're doing is just asking to move those, those lines.
Basically, you're approving moving the money from the line item that has money available to a line item that needs it.
Okay, are these, uh, so obviously these expenditures are just for the current year that we're, we're in right now, all right, Kathy, have any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, um, motion made, discussion, Charlie, anything further?
Nope.
All in favor, aight, all right, thank you.
So, to discuss and sign with Apex Companies LLC for professional engineering services with the Black Brook Estates definitive subdivision.
Motion made, I'll second that, discussion?
Right, previously, we had done with Apex sort of, um, an overall contract when we need engineering services, or more so, review of plans and such for things like a subdivision or commercial development, we had set aside money specifically for that, um, in this case, what's happening is that contract is gone, but we have a development, one mentioned there in the agenda, where the developer will be in fact paying for this cost, but we still need to sign a contract with an engineering firm, and Apex is very familiar with East Bridgewater and vice versa, um, so that the planning board would use them to do the review on the subdivision, um, and this is more inspectional reviews, it's not doing the buildings, for instance, but the, um, infrastructure of the subdivision, the roads, drainage, things like that.
Yep, yeah, I said it in the track meeting when they discussed this as well, so I was aware of what was going on, um, all right, motion's made, I second it, I think, discussion, any questions you have for Charlie? All in favor, all right.
Uh, motion discussion on protocols and best practices for handling anonymous complaints.
Right, the board had put this on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, we had a very long meeting, and the board moved this over to tonight.
Yep.
And it came by because we had gotten a couple anonymous complaints, I think we had a question, which was referred to town council, um, about that, in the sense of setting up a policy, um, for handling them, in the sense of, do we, you know, some of it might depend on the severity of the complaint, some of it might, uh, and such as to whether we're going to acknowledge, not, obviously, the person who's anonymous, because the person's anonymous, but in the sense of, are we gonna actually follow through and investigate the complaint or not?
Yeah, all right, so I'll start, since I spoke to Charlie, so my concern here is, um, you know, going from department to department, whether it be conservation, border health, or wherever, it's, there isn't no, there's no unit, unisist rule that, you know, encompasses what they do or how they handle them based on whatever the complaint may be, um, so, it's really difficult, because you know what happens, everything gets funneled down to this office right here, and, um, it's difficult to really understand, uh, what the circumstances are, and the last thing I think this board, or any board really wants to do is, you know, get in between neighbors, because sometimes that's what, what it comes down to, right? Somebody doesn't like somebody's dog, next thing you know, they're, you know, calling numerous times to whatever department, I mean, that's a smaller aspect, but, you know, the long and short of it is, it's just, and I've asked each department what, you know, what the protocol is for when somebody calls and says, I don't want to give my name, but I, you know, have a complaint, so they say, well, you know, we, we look at it in different, different ways, sometimes we'll take the call, we'll go down and investigate, sometimes we won't, um, obviously, if it's, as Charlie just said, if it's something that's breaking the law, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
A whole different story, so, yeah, my concern, uh, in putting this on there is just to try to figure out, you know, how far we, we wanna go with this, and what we're gonna ask from each department to be, to be done, so it's the same no matter where you're going.
Right, every department should have the same set of processes in order to handle them, and then, you know, if it's expedited at those different departments to a certain level, that, which they feel like they can't control, then what is our role in that, is basically, I think, same thing, it's like getting a set of processes, what does that look like, is that a bylaw change, is that something that we just kinda put in?
Internal policy.
Yeah, it's internal with each, you know, and, and it's difficult because some of those boards are elected officials, so, you know, they'll, they'll determine what that department head should and shouldn't do, but, you know, what I've found in, in this town is that when you have the open discussions ahead of time, and involve them in what their thoughts are.
Right.
It comes out.
Get the full.
Yes, a lot better, yeah, because, I don't know when this started, but, whether it was social media or whatever, but this anonymous stuff is.
Oh, well, no, I mean, it's gone for decades, because, I mean, I would get.
Maybe I'm just.
I, I would get.
Learning of it now.
I would get calls on the phone, you know.
Right, right.
Many, many years ago, um, depend, and it also depended on how easy it was, someone says, okay, someone's got five junk cars in their front lawn, I can drive by the lawn and see, okay, I can count, fine, then I would, whether, you know, I'd go to the enforcement agency, whoever was gonna be in that community, say, okay, we do have a problem at ten Main Street, they've got five junk cars, let's follow through on this, in essence, the anonymous complaint becomes the town itself complaining to itself, saying, yes, we've noticed that there's, um, not illegal activity, a violation of the bylaw, for instance.
Sure, right, yeah.
Versus, do we, do you have to get onto somebody's property to determine whether there's a violation of the bylaw, a barking dog you mentioned, for instance, you can send the ACO by the property, is the dog barking, nope, fine, okay, I went by, thank you, and, because again, we're not responding, we're not gonna call the anonymous person, because the person's anonymous, but they can.
Right.
You know, if it's serious enough, obviously, the person can always give a name and address, and we'll follow through with that person, say, we went through, you know, by the property, we don't have a dog, you know, barking dog there, sorry.
Right, yeah, I mean, I mean, there's two sides to this, is obviously, you know, what the complaints are, and, and, you know, who's, who's making the complaints, and then the bigger picture to me was the fact that others' departments looking at each of these the same way, you know, if they're getting a call from their cousin from East Bridgewater that they know, are they going to look at the same from, they're getting from somebody that they can't stand, you know, I mean, so we're just gonna make sure that everybody is, uh, on the same page of, of how, you know, we, we handle these, and no matter if they're anonymous or the person's giving their name, it's just, you know, what, what we're looking at and how we're, how we're going about it.
Now, the way that, how would you handle one right now, Charlie?
Well, again, you're gonna look at the variables, in the sense of, how easy is it to check and make, is it easy to determine?
Do you do that yourself?
I can.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think.
Depends on the situation, I mean, if it's a zoning violation, I might pass along to Patrick, in the sense of, I'm not, I'm not going to make the determination, someone says, there's, you know, illegal use of ten Main Street, okay, I can forward to Patrick in that it's his bailiwick to check, but beyond, you know, he'd have to make that determination himself, on the.
Right, so you're, are you looking for Charlie to defer to the department that he thinks it should be?
Well, I think what we need to do is first, you know, have the discussions, and Charlie can have these with the department heads, uh, based on, you know, what they're getting for calls, you know, whether it's somebody calling in to, to complain, or somebody that's anonymously sending an email, whatever the case may be.
Right.
And then find out what they're doing for what they see most often, you know, I mean, I'm gonna say, bet you anything, that most of the complaints that they get, like, for instance, conservation gets a lot about wetlands, that's just, that's just what they get, you know, people cut down trees in the backyard, or put something in, neighbor doesn't like them, they, you know, they make a phone call, right, so, as long as we're doing the same thing for.
Somebody that they know versus an anonymous.
Whoever it may be, yeah, just the department head is, is handling them the same way, because, you know, it's a small, yeah, it's a small tenant, we get the phone call that says, well, you know, just John.
And I think that if somebody is complaining or reporting something anonymously, you know, the follow-up on that would look different if it wasn't somebody that, you know, you had a number and a name and a contact and everything to follow up with, um, so I think that having a set, having a process that we have for every complaint, whether that be anonymous, non-anonymous.
Right.
And having them, you know, be able to say, this is the actions that we were taking before it got expedited to our office, is something that.
These might be isolated situations, you're gonna find out more when you have your.
Well, I can talk with the department head, yeah.
Yeah, when you have those meetings.
And I can bring, you know, like, we can carry this over to the fourteenth.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, yeah, and we can decide once, well, you, you know, maybe it's the fourteenth, maybe it takes a little longer to gather some of that, that information.
You know, sitting with them and seeing, I feel like, what that, what the best process looks like for all of them.
Yeah.
In regards to complaints, I know, we get complaints in my job, it's, we have a.
No, 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 everything's.
Right up here. You know, yeah, exactly, so I, I think we, having a process is.
Yeah, and you may even find, Charlie, that some of the department heads are, you know, pleased to have that conversation, to try to figure out what, you know, what they're supposed to be doing, and how they're supposed to be handling it as well, so that everybody understands.
Well, and, you know, and some of them are gonna be different, some of, I mean, John's gonna get a complaint, John Haynes is gonna complain, is, I'm, I don't wanna give my name, but there's a pothole on Main Street.
Right.
They can, they can go check and see if there's a pothole on Main Street, and.
Yes, it's different, different level.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate that, we'll wait to hear back from you on that, all right, I don't think that was for a motion, anything, um, so seventeen, I think.
Yeah, discussion on exploring options to increase the number of package store licenses in the town of East Bridgewater.
Right, we've had several vendors, um, who have other licenses, um, ask about getting a, these are for package store, not pouring restaurant licenses, but package store licenses, um, either beer and wine, or an all, or all alcohol, though, generally, more people want to get the all alcohol, under state law, we're limited based on the population and the number of licenses the board can issue, we've issued all of them.
Okay.
So there's none extra floating around at all, um, most cities and towns would handle it, if there was interest in increasing the licenses, they go to the state legislature to get a bill passed that would increase the number of licenses by a certain number. The only downside that I see, so, you know, setting aside going through all these steps is obviously, there's only a certain limited market, unless you have some extraordinary liquor store or beer and wine shop, you're only, you're dividing the market smaller, into smaller pieces, um, so that those, um, stores that are operating right now would tend to lose money, um, one way or the other, if we open, if we provide more licenses. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, in the sense of, you know, maybe some, you know, this beer and wine place just isn't doing a lot of business, but they want the beer and wine license because they, it's worth a lot of money by itself, and, but, it's not worth it to somebody else to buy it from them, so they want, they're hoping that the town will issue other licenses in the future, that they might put an application in, and might be able to operate a better beer and wine license, uh, shop than the other one does, but, um, since we're getting requests through the office, um, I thought prudent to talk with the board, if, you know, if the board was interested in pursuing that or not.
Yeah, so, hmm, um, so what, is it per capita, I mean, how do they?
Yes, you know, it's like, it's basically, you know, I don't know if it's every five thousand or ten thousand, but.
Residents?
Yes.
Okay, and, what, offhand, do you know how many we, we currently, so there's two different ones, there's just beer and wine.
Beer and wine is all alcohol.
Yeah, okay.
You wanna sign vodka, you, you have to have the all alcohol.
Yeah, right, right, so, how many, are they different, the numbers that we have, or do we know?
Three and five, or five and five?
Three and five.
Three and five, so three beer and wine?
Three all.
Three all.
Three all alcohol and five beer and wine.
Okay, and then the process would be, if we wanted to take a look at it, would be, we'd have to apply to the state notice?
We'd have to file special legislation.
Okay.
Maybe we'd talk to town council, whether we would need a vote at town meeting to submit the bill, or it'd be simply, in this case, we're not asking for a change, um, a specific change in the law or anything like that, like when we're getting out of civil service, for instance.
Yep, yep.
Um, it's simply a change in the number of licenses available, and I know there were bills on the hill that, um, I think the senate version of the, um, budget, for instance, was going to eliminate the quotas.
Okay.
But, we don't know where, how, whether that's gonna come through a conference committee or not.
Never trust the legislative.
Right, well, and also, you know, one way or the other, I would say, you know, I would hope in a month, a month and a half, we'll find out what the conference committee comes out with, but in the meantime, um, if the board was interested, I could talk to town council and figure out, if we wanted to do this, would it be coming from the board, would it be coming from town meeting?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd be interested to find out, I mean, I don't have a problem either way, um, probably be easier for us if, if it was something that we put it, put it in front of the town at town meeting, to, you know, have a discussion, to see what, you know, where that goes, it could be either two seconds, or it could be seven days, I mean, it depends on what, you know, what we've got, but, yeah, I mean, I guess, from my point of view would be to, you know, certainly get the information from town council and see what they're doing.
Especially if we're having inquiries, I believe, that that is something, um, and I know that, you know, once you speak with John, if, if we do need special legislation, then having it at town meeting is necessary.
Thank you, all right, moving on, that's, I think, all the, that's everything, thank you, announcements, staff reports?
There's one additional action.
Oh, there's, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, do you have that, Kathy?
Assistant Town Clerk.
Oh, here it is, right here. Sorry. To appoint Stephanie Carrara as the Assistant Town Clerk for the period of June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, um, no term.
Okay, motion's been made, um.
Another position filled, yes.
Second, yeah, um, discussion, no, is she, is she here?
Looking forward to getting to know.
No, Katie wasn't, wasn't prepared to do a presentation or anything, as she said she would do.
I didn't know Stephanie was, was, was here, all right, so, well, I would tell her to, um, definitely invite her into one of our future meetings.
Yeah.
I'm assuming she wasn't.
She'd be, she'd be here, you know, on the Monday, or, well, Howard would come by on Monday, on the fourteenth to say hello to you all.
Right. I'm, the board approved. I'm not mad about the, you know, everybody laughing.
Kate.
All right, yeah.
I thought the meeting was ending.
Right, it is, it's getting close.
Steph, Stephanie.
Do we know anything about her, do we know anything about Stephanie, you wanna add something, have you met her, have, Lee?
Yes, I met her.
Shake a hand with her or something?
I did.
High five?
Yeah, shook hands, she's very nice.
Okay, all right, great.
I believe she's from Abby.
Oh, all right, thank you.
I'm looking forward to getting to know Stephanie, and congratulations on the new role.
Yeah, where did she come, she came from another town, right?
The Town Clerk in Stowin.
Okay.
And most recently, the interim Town Clerk in Norwell.
All right, Clippers, all right, I won't hold that against her, but that's all right. Uh, all right, great, uh, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome Stephanie, uh, all right, now we're done, right, Lee?
Town Administrator Report.
Well, yeah, but.
No, no, we're just asking, our action items are done, we don't have anything else.
The action items.
Yes, action items are done.
Do you have any announcements?
Announcements?
Uh, Town Hall will be closed next Friday, July fourth.
Oh, it's next Friday, wow.
I know, right, really fast, I feel like we've flown through the month.
Okay, next Friday, and don't come to Town Hall, they're closed, all right, that's it?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, all right, Charlie, you're up.
Uh, priorities for calendar year, again, twenty twenty-five, I had presented these to the board back in May, um, we were going to discuss them on June ninth, and obviously we had a long meeting, we got this off the twenty-third, and I didn't know if the board had any sense of, um, this has come up in the sense of, um, more an emphasis of my time, obviously, there's always a number of things going on, on any particular day.
Yep.
But, um, the board and I had talked about what's come up with, again, it's not an exclusive list, list, it's, those are the only things you gotta work on.
Yep.
These are the things that we need to be pushing on during the calendar year.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we should review this, and then, um, we got a time.
Yeah, I think Carol being here too, especially, I know she'll wanna.
Yeah, I've passed this along.
Right.
I'll bring it over to the fourteenth then.
She's not gonna be here for that either?
I know that, so we're bringing it to August eleventh.
Right, right, we can always do enough, if we have to add one somewhere in there, we can certainly add a meeting, but I would send her the, the information.
Yeah, I will.
And give her our best.
Yeah.
Um, beautification committee, um, I guess there was a, there's a project at the high school for maybe one of the classes where they have to come up with some civic-oriented idea, project, something like that.
Okay.
Um, it, they, I don't know if they're, how many kids are involved or anything like that, we've gotten three or four of these over this year, for instance, with ideas and suggestions, in this case, the student had said, you know, we should do more about beautifying the town, both in terms of cleanup, plantings, things like that, um, and I did respond to say, I thought, you know, it was a great letter, a great suggestion, um, obviously we have, at times, various groups have done cleanups, we had one, um, just a couple of months ago, I think the DTC, um, ran one a couple of months ago, um, it was nonpartisan, nevertheless, you know, you didn't have to be any political affiliation to help pick up trash.
Okay, that's good news.
But it's not a, you know, it, it was there to do, you know, pick up the trash and such, um, there are beautification committees in a number of other communities, um, I picked out at least four or five, um, that, they have, you know, on the town website for those communities, they have information, what they do and such, almost always, these are volunteer committees, um, the people who are on the committee, much of the time, do the actual work.
Okay.
Uh, it's not, you know, they might run a cleanup event and get a lot more volunteers on that particular day, they might, um, do gardening at various intersections, or, not suggesting we have to do something in front of Town Hall, but for instance, we want, you know, you want to plant flowers around the sign, for instance, we have, everything like that.
This is something that I've, uh, actually spoken to Carol about, that she's, she's said before that this is something that I know, I know she said this is something she's interested in, um, especially, like, you're talking flower boxes downtown, I know she's brought this up to me a couple of times, um, previously, uh, and I think, you know, we always need younger people involved in, um, town government and whatnot, and I think it's, especially her reaching out, I think that's amazing, I think that that's something we should.
Yeah.
Absolutely support, uh, because I actually just had a conversation with the superintendent before, is that there, this is something that I think we want the chi, the kids to be involved in, and especially they feel closer as well to their community, and they're giving back, and, there's nothing that I can see that's going on, I know that Carol would love to be part of this conversation, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, and she's, uh, she's mentioned it in a couple of meetings even in the past, too, so.
Well, when the full board's present, we can have a discussion, um.
And invite Maria, you know, if she wants to come to a meeting, and, um, she's more, more than welcome, I always say invite you, I'm like, come, please come.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, no doubt.
Come tell us here, what you want. Come tell us here, what you want.
Yep, yeah, I think that would, I mean, I don't think anyone's, you know, no one's against the idea. I think it's just making sure that she's got the support and what she needs.
I mean, usually what happens is, you know, obviously, there's no money in the budget right now. If you've got a committee together, they could make the request to the town for a small set.
Right.
They can get donations from businesses, whether they're materials or whether it's cash or some combination thereof. Those are possibilities. You know, you can start small, you can, you know, pick one area or one plot or whatever and say, we're going to start here and do this, so it stays within the abilities of the committee and people don't get burned out. And work out events where a lot more people can help out on a given morning or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, people are certainly going to, depending on what the, the action is that you take on with this committee, let's go back to the, you know, the community senior center, they started that garden, you know, some years ago, and now you got, it's like waiting room to get your little plot, so you can, you know, make your vegetables or whatever the case.
And they can work sponsorships with the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, for instance. Okay, we're going to do a community project here.
Yeah, especially Eagle Scouts do their own project. I think that that is, you know, having kind of a committee to handle that and field what we can kind of put our, put everybody's brain together, especially those people that are kind of giving back. That would be awesome, so I'm excited to have Carol for that. She'll be excited about it.
Great.
Great, I'll continue, we'll get it on the agenda when Carol's back. The, the last one is that I wanted to honor East Bridgewater Police Officer Derek Card. He received the OUI Excellence Award from the Mothers Against Drunk Driving a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Wonderful award, I mean, obviously, it's a very important program. Unfortunately, it needs to continue every year, but to know that people like him, not just in East Bridgewater, but I believe someone's designated, receives this award in a number of communities, that each community's providing those services and helping protect residents and travelers through those communities.
Great. Yep, well, congratulations to Derek.
Yeah, congratulations, Derek.
Yeah, you know, you might want to mention to the chief, if he's available in the future, he should come in and we can certainly honor him here at the, at the meeting for sure. Sit.
That's all, I got my, hopefully, an exec session of less than five minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Carol's not, we can, we can stay all day, Charlie. It's no, no big deal.
Lee has to go home. I'm not saying anything. Yes.
Finance Committee had me to do some transfers, reserve fund transfers. We met, we interviewed two candidates who applied, have talked to them, they got great resumes, and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to move them on to the Select Board for appointment.
All right.
The board does this, I would like to have them come by on the fourteenth, introduce themselves, or be good.
All right, so these are the two right here, Dave, all right, and so we got Eric Richard Cardoza and Jennifer Huss. So you want to just make a individual motion, I guess, is that how we're going to be okay with that, Charlie?
Do we have term expiration dates for each of their terms?
I'm not sure what they have, one of, probably two year or one year.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know either. So, I mean, we, can we make the motion?
For the appropriate terms, for the vacant seats.
Right, 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 right. So, just make a motion for, let's start with Jennifer. For the, this is the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, actually, I think they're both two years.
Okay.
Because the two that they're replacing have forty.
So June 30th of 2027?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, just to make sure, we'll just do that, as you said, the affiliated positions for whatever the term limits are or something along that.
Okay, the motion to approve the affiliated, affiliated positions with the Finance Committee for Jennifer Huss and.
We do them together?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And Eric Richard Cardoza.
Okay, great. I will second that motion. Discussion, I think we had that. Looking forward to them. What does that leave you?
That gives us a full board of Finance Committee, capital's still short, we almost, you know, still pushing out there for folks with the list that was published.
Yep.
Here we're true, we'll get updated tonight.
Great, okay, great. Well, that's, that's good news, yeah, yeah. Yep, and we'll invite them in and formally introduce.
Yeah, definitely have them in front of us for introductions.
Yep. All right, motion's made in second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good to go. Okay, moving on, board discussions. Catherine, you've got something you'd like to bring up? Something in back of your mind you'd like to talk about?
Um, no, I think that it's definitely, one of the things I was thinking about, especially seeing Flint Road, and I discussed it earlier, is just having a set of processes set in place for speed changes around town. I was kind of looking around at other towns, see what that is, if that's a bylaw change or something that we make here.
No, because under the general laws, in the, where we're doing, we'll take it in a couple of pieces. If we wanted, if we were not dealing with thickly settled areas, then there's a process already in place of, that, you know, you have to do what's called a speed study. You work with OCPC, those, you put those ropes, and I think even the ropes now are ancient. I think they just have lasers or whatever, but they'll check the speeds and determine what the appropriate speed limit is.
Yeah.
What we've been dealing with is a thickly settled issue in that it used to be thirty, it used to be thirty.
Right.
They lowered it to twenty-five, but the towns could do that on a case by case basis or townwide. So that's why you'll see in some communities, signs, you're entering town X, speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour unless otherwise posted.
Okay.
Because they're saying, yes, it's the entire town is thickly settled, qualifies for that. But the state then also said you could even go to twenty miles per hour if the board approved, I think it was a special safety zone or something like that. So the approvals for all that go through the board. There's no bylaw, it's based on the mass general laws. So there's no bylaw that the town needs to do anything.
So any speed change that goes from, for below twenty, it goes through us?
Well, any speed change has to go through you.
Okay.
It's set, there's a set of traffic rules and regulations in each community. It includes, is there a one-way street, what street it is, which way it goes, where's a stoplight, where's a stop sign, things like that, and also speed limits. So for instance, we have a speed limit that may go up and down on Central Street.
Right.
That was approved at some point by the board. It might have been thirty years ago, fifty years ago, whenever, but those speed limits were approved by the board, not by town meeting or some other entity.
Okay.
And so we have a list under, if you went to the DPW page, for instance, you'll have a traffic rules and regulations.
Right.
Tab, and you can see all that information.
Yeah, really, what I was thinking about is just, you know, I was kind of, I know the Traffic Advisory Committee Board, that seems to be very new, right? You guys have recently appointed them, and I think when they were here last meeting, I think they're kind of like in, like the chief said tonight, in the infantry, infantry stages, but kind of like the processes that we were talking about with anonymous complaints, maybe having something like that for speed changes. And I know, you know, every, the, the argument that Mr. Perioli had here with, you know, oh, well, there are some unique neighborhoods, absolutely, but I think we also have the ability to have John, who is able to identify what those unique areas are versus what they're not, on the Traffic Advisory Committee is, is nice, so maybe having, you know, this for, you know, cul-de-sacs, this for main roads, you know, having those set up. And I don't know if that's just asking for a discussion here with everyone.
Want to do an introduction?
I don't, I'm not going to be here.
Okay.
So I wanted to introduce you to Stephanie.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Stephanie, come on in, sit down.
Come on in.
Enjoy.
Ah, and I apologize, I'm not ready for it, but I was listening.
Yeah, yeah. Eavesdropping.
I was eavesdropping on the meeting, and I'm not here for your next two meetings.
Okay.
So I wanted to introduce you. Stephanie Carrer comes to us directly from Norwell. She was interim Town Clerk for the last roughly year there, and then before that, she was the Town Clerk in Stoughton. And before that, she was the Assistant Town Clerk.
Yeah.
She has done all of her qualifications, so she has her CMC, CMMC, MMC.
ABC.
Yeah, all the letters after my name, pretty cool.
Yeah, which is wonderful, and has unfortunately hit the ground running. And it's been wonderful because I have somebody to, that I can bounce questions off of.
Absolutely, yeah.
This, this is so great. I thanked Katie for hiring me. I'm looking forward to it. I want to grow roots. I don't want to bounce around anymore.
You live in Norwell?
No, I actually live in Stoughton. I worked for Stoughton for twenty, twenty-seven and a half years, but sometimes it's time to move on. Little change did me good.
Good.
And I went to Norwell, yeah. I went to Norwell, helped them out for almost a year, and I thought I was going to have to retire and I didn't want to.
Yeah.
You know, I still, I've still got some years in me that I want to work.
Absolutely.
And this came up, and I applied and got it, so I'm really looking forward to working with Katie and Melissa.
Yep, yep, good staff, good people to work with for sure, and like I said, we, we welcome you and, you know, we look forward to.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Exciting to have you here.
Thank you, really happy.
Thank you for coming down and introducing yourself to us.
Thank you.
It's so nice to see your face. Like I said, we're, like, I'm like, all right, where is everybody? Come on, say hi.
Well, it's, it's nice that, a lot of people might not think it's nice to have a late night, but it's nice to have a late night early in the week. You just get it over with.
Right.
Right.
You know, Wednesday was Norwell's and Thursdays was Stoughton.
Yeah, oh boy.
You know, Thursday nights rough.
Yeah.
Mondays are hard enough. We like to keep it hard.
Exactly. It's like you turn around, you're right there, but it's a little different here, so. Thank you for welcoming me. I, I do appreciate it.
Yeah, no, thank you, Katie, for bringing her down.
Thank you.
Going to ask her to come in, do announcements the next two meetings?
I know, right? Maybe, really? I haven't told you that yet.
It was so nice to meet you. So nice to meet you.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll see you soon, I'm sure.
Yeah, of course, of course. Thank you guys so much.
No, you're good.
Yeah, so just, that's, I, I just, I was kind of just toying with it, because I think coming in with the, the summer drive conversation halfway, I was like, I, I felt as though it was, I was walking into something in the middle, and I was like, I don't have. You know, and I'm like, I don't know what this process is like. I don't also know if I'm just like, not privy to it, whether that be me going to a TAC meeting or something, or if them coming here, whichever is easier. And then another question I had was, what are, if there is something, an action item on the agenda, who, with whatever department head, are they required to come, or is the town official who meets puts the action item on here? Is there any bylaw that requires them to come? Okay, is there anything?
We can put the word out that simply would say from the board through the Select Board Office is that if you have something on the agenda as an action item, the board would like your attendance or you're designated to attend to answer questions about it.
I just wanted to get you guys', maybe as a discussion or don't know, I was just thinking about it because sometimes I'll have questions and I don't, I don't want it to be a matter of like, I send them an email privately and ask them the question, and then I feel like I'm not being necessarily transparent on the whole issue. Granted, I can come here and regurgitate whatever that conversation is, but I think maybe for the sake of like transparency, having that conversation here, I also don't want, I don't know if there's maybe, if it's something that requires, you know, a substantial funding change, like my, like the, the one with, with John Shea, I definitely, yeah, like, I, I, just because I'm not sure on that, like, I would have questions, but I didn't know what our ability was in order to request somebody to come forward and have that, and I didn't know what your opinion is.
The board can always say, you know, fine, we're tabling this to the next meeting until so-and-so is here to answer questions.
Okay.
You know, there's no, there's, I mean, obviously, there may be times when we're dealing with deadlines, but then
Right.
what you're suggesting is, well, we won't have to worry about the deadline if the person's here.
Right, and I don't want them to feel like, like us, we're stepping on their neck in order for them to be here. Obviously, we know life happens, but at the same time, I think, you know, maybe with the understanding there are going to be some questions on specific issues.
Yeah, and most of the time, I would say, just in time I've been here, most of the, depending on the topic that, that we're discussing, most of the time, if it's something of.
They come on their own, which I've noticed, so.
And then the other thing is too, is I've done exactly what you said in the past, you know, Lee does a great job of getting this agenda out to us, you know, midweek prior to that Monday night meeting.
Right, so we could ask, like.
Well, you can tell Charlie, you know, call, call Lee, call Charlie whoever.
Can we request them, and I, I don't, I don't know, I didn't know if it's like, if I could just request them, or we all request them, or is.
Any of the three of you, you call Lee, you call Rebecca, you call, and you say, hey, can we have so-and-so here on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll make the call.
Yeah, okay.
And they're pretty responsive, I don't think.
I was going to say, I don't want to be the one that's like, that's why I'm always, like, I wish they were here, but then again, I don't know if that needs to be.
And maybe designating, the person may be on vacation, especially, you know.
Right.
The fourteenth, for instance, I mean, we're going to have a Select Board member on vacation. I don't know who else might be on vacation, but we'll do our darndest to have that person.
Right.
Yeah, or they send a representative down that's, has the knowledge as well.
Okay, yeah, that's definitely something that I wanted to know what basically our ability, our authority was there, because there are some things, and we know, we don't necessarily, you know, telephone poll changes, I think, that we've had that have approved. We don't need, you know, John to be here, but certain things, I think, you know.
Telephone poll change, in that case, what we ask is for national grid.
Yeah, I was going to say, whatever.
They do bring somebody.
They do, right, so it's kind of like, I'm trying to figure out what, what requires them to be here, and I didn't know if there is a certain bylaw for that, so if that makes sense, I definitely will.
Do you have a copy of the bylaws?
I don't. I would love a copy of the bylaws, because I'm not, I'm like looking, I think I have it online, I can see it online, but if you have a physical copy, that would be great.
We can get, we, there are printers.
Yeah, that would be awesome. I know, I'm like, you can tell I work at the State House, I'm all old school, my paper binder and everything, so. Okay, that was, sorry, that was all I have. I took longer than Charlie tonight with my five minutes.
Yeah, that's all right, that's all right. So I did the same thing when I first started, I have a million questions, and that's what we want, you know. We want you to understand exactly the processes and feel comfortable with, with the questions, and go for it.
Thank you.
Great, great. So I only have, easy one. So I got, the first one is, I wanted to thank Dale and the duds once again for the, the show, was well received, as, as it always is. Thank the Rec Department for, for helping to put that together.
And I wanted to thank Police Department for, I mean, being there.
Hundred percent.
Was a little, there was a little confusion about getting the cars and barricades and everything else, but it worked out.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
I appreciate Michael and his crew for doing that.
Yep, talk to Officer Grillo, who was on hand at the, at the event as well, so, yeah, it was, it's just a fun event. It's like, starts the summer.
Yeah, it was, it's crazy if they still do, it's so nice that they still do it.
Yep, and I think he'll still do it until he can't do it anymore, and that would be like, he'd have to be six feet under.
Exactly, he's funny.
Carol may have input.
Yeah, oh yeah, she will, but I, I think she enjoys it just as much as Dale does, so, you know, definitely for sure. That would be the first thing, and then I want to congratulate Nancy Hill, myself, all of us, all three of us, we attended today her retirement party. As I said, at the retirement party, Nancy's done a wonderful job turning that complex down in there into, you know, like Disney World compared to what, what it was prior, you know, and, and again, her service over twenty years, you know, I'm sure she'll continue to, to come back and help, but I wanted to.
It's turned into a full service center for older residents here of East Bridgewater. I mean, it's not just a bus, it's not just Meals on Wheels, it's not, you know, they've got programs there almost every single day, not just one or two, but several every day. It's an amazing place.
That's it, absolutely.
Yeah, I, it's been so nice to be able to work with Nancy, and now have, she's, as soon as I got in this role, she's leaving, but Sue is also so well equipped for this new role, and I think she's going to do an amazing job, and I had the privilege to speak with Nancy Trainer, who is going to be taking in Sue's role, and she, sounds like she has a lot of drive to continue to make sure that it's an active center, and Kelly Long, too, like, I think that whole team is going to do a great job in following in Nancy's footsteps and just as Nancy followed in Mrs. Haynes' footsteps, so it's, it's very nice.
Yep, we turn over, and we'll just have to deal with Dave Sheetz, so, I mean, that's probably the only.
God bless.
Yeah, the only downside to that.
Well, it's better to, it's better to have people in the tent than outside the tent.
That's.
I will not discuss the rest of that saying.
Right, I know you're saying, absolutely. The last thing is, and it just came to mind, actually, with the beautification and, and, you know, the student wanting to do it, so when I first got on the board, I was always, I always thought it was great that the school committee had a, I think from the student council, had a, whether it be the president or whoever, come to their meetings and discuss what was happening inside the school, so that the, the school committee would know and then the residents would know. And we started, I tried in the beginning, I think that, I think they moved a couple of the advisors that I had talked about, doing something similar to that at, here at the, at the Select Boards meeting. You know, maybe once a month, maybe the senior president of the class, you know, is able to come in and give us some feedback on, on some of the projects that, you know, they find that's going on in the school, just to kind of get that connect.
Yeah, that's, I just had a conversation with your sister, actually, on the same, on the same exact thing, because I was thinking the same way as having, integrating them here.
Yep.
Especially, you know, being in this role in town government, even in state government, my day-to-day job, but where there is a need for having the younger people and being, having them involved to see really how like the wheels turn ever so slowly, but they still do turn, you know, at the town and state levels, so I think it's having, I think that's a great discussion to have, and I definitely.
Yeah, I think, and I, and this is probably three town administrators removed, but I think, Charlie, if you had a talk with Gina, you know, about, you know, maybe getting the president of the class, whatever, to, you know, give us just a brief, Andre, I mean, they're elected by their, by their students, same, same way we are, to try to just, you know, maybe they can coordinate with the other three classes to find out what's, what's happening in those.
I know that there's.
And we may be able to assist in some way as well in some of those projects they got going on.
And I know the superintendent, Gina, Ms. Williams, Dr. Williams, she, she mentioned that there would be, there's some kind of funding that is going to be having like them go through kind of different internships and phases and everything like that, where there might be groups of kids. She talked about integrating that into town. I saw, she'll, she'll probably kind of give you the same spiel. I don't want to speak for her, but she's definitely on the same wavelength, so that's actually.
Yeah, it's a good time to start because it's summer, obviously, the kids are out.
Think about it now, before it starts in September.
And we don't bring someone, and like I said, maybe, you know, once a month or once, once a quarter, they come in and kind of give us the overview. But I have noticed in the past that there've been events that go on that some way. But I have noticed in the past, there've been events that go on that some way, you know, are affected by some of our departments, and you just brought it up, Charlie, and police may be, need to be involved in something, or, or the DPW, and I think it's a good, good connect, and to Catherine's point, it's, it also gives them kind of an idea of, you know, what we're, we're trying to accomplish here, you know, I mean, they're running a, a class, and, you know, we're trying to, wouldn't say run a town, but keep it, keep it together in some way, so, yeah, if you want to reach out there and see what, you know, her ideas are. And that's all I've got. All right, so we'll, we're not coming back, right, we're all good here, so we're going to have you read the, the good old, we'll close the regular meeting, and we'll open up Executive Session, so you have to read the-
Executive Session, vote to close open meeting and enter Executive Session and not return to open session pursuant of MGL Chapter 30A,